Okay, we'll bring the meeting to order and we'll start with a Hail Mary. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, Lord of thee, what's with thou among women? Blessed be thy own, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, first sinner is bound the arrow for death, amen. Okay, 2.1 approval of the agenda. Could I have a mover please? Trustee Intomasi, seconded by trustee Trites, all in favor? Opposed, seen none. Approval of the minutes, 2.2. Could I have a mover for the minutes please? Trustee Michael, seconded by trustee Quinns, all in favor? Opposed, seen none, that passes. So now we're on to action items, 3.1. To put it on the table, could I have a mover before discussion? Trustee Quinns, acted by trustee Danko. And could I have Ms. Collymore speak to this?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Before you are the amendments that I have proposed at the last two policy meetings. And at the last regular board meeting, trustees requested that it come back to the policy committee for further review and clarification. So the report, as you see, hasn't changed from the last two meetings. But, so, it's all there as it's been. In light of these amendments, I'm also asking for recommending a policy change in the name, so just to educational research. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella.
Well, I was the one that brought up the issue of the consent for some of the surveys and that, and that kids are exposed to or asked to participate in. So I wondered if some kind of language about that should be there. I have a sample, something like, "All research directed at students will require active consent in the form of a signed letter, permission form, from parent guardian." So just, or what's happening now with their surveys now, maybe I don't even know.
Okay, so through you, Mr. Chair. So on page 11 of the policy, the last two bullet points refer to the fact that we do collect informed consent currently as a procedure in our board whenever research is being conducted. So the Tri-Policy Council statement is one that includes various principles. And one of these principles is collecting informed consent. So all external research applications know of this policy very well, they're all very familiar. And so they all know that informed consent is one of the things that we need to get from our students and our parents when we're conducting research. Excuse my voice for a second. So it's explicitly stated that informed consent must be, people must be aware of the purpose of the procedure or the study being undertaken. They have to know that it's voluntary. And they have to know that they have the right to withdraw without penalty or prejudice from any study taking place. So all of our external research applicants that are approved and that conduct research in our boards, all of them have a consent form that has all of this information on it. And all parents would see this consent form, which is what you're calling an active consent procedure. So all of our external applicants or research projects have to use active consent, okay? For internal research projects, the process is a little bit different, mainly because most of our internal research projects are mandated by the Ministry of Education. And I've spoken to many of the various branches of the ministry after this came up at our last meeting. And all of those chief officers said things like, "We don't use active informed consent procedures." We definitely acknowledge that we have informed consent, which is why oftentimes, or all the time, we always have an information letter that's sent out before the research is undertaken. So examples include the EDI this past year was a data collection year for our early development instrument, which our senior kindergarten teachers fill out on behalf of the students. And parents are given an information letter before it happens. And in the letter, they're told that the purpose of the data collection, they're told that if they don't want their child to participate, they have the right to not allow their data to be collected, and so they are to connect with the principal. And all of this is done beforehand. I looked at the actual memo from the EDI, just as an example, and it clearly states that active consent is not a requirement. So the main issue with including such an explicit statement, like all of our research projects have to have active consent, is that all, if not most, of the ministry mandated research activities don't actually use active consent. They all use passive consent. And so it becomes problematic when we have this statement in here because the ministry, I didn't get an indication that they were changing it to be active anytime soon. So, just to reiterate, our policy does include, not explicitly that informed consent is needed, and in the actual administrative procedure that is accompanying with the policy, it does list the differences like what external researchers have to do with respect to consent, what internal researchers have to do with respect to consent. And if they're unsure, they can always contact me, which is listed in the procedure for clarification.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So, I'm not concerned so much about the external and the consent requirements we have for external. It's internal that I'm concerned about, and the role of parents in providing that consent. And the informed consent part, when the school climate surveys and what is the other survey called, tell them from me?
Same.
Same one now? Okay. That survey, as a parent, I found to be secretive in a way that I wasn't able to give informed consent because I couldn't see the questions they were going to ask my children. And when I asked the director to show me the questions, she said they were, pardon me, they were proprietary and they couldn't even be shared with trustees. So, that, I think, is the opposite, or the voice of parents in their inability to provide consent that's informed because we don't allow them to know what's being asked. So my concern is that if we're not asking for explicit consent from parents for these surveys, then, and we can't give the parents the information that their children are being asked, then they're not really giving consent. They're hoping that what we're asking is something that they approve of.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So I think there's a misconception of what is meant by the term active informed consent. Active consent doesn't mean that you get to see all of the measures before the study takes place. Active consent means you get to see a permission form, and it tells you the purpose of the study. Sometimes it gives you a sample measure or sample items, and it tells you the main, the bigger constructs that are going to be examined. So bullying is something that they're going to be looking at. It'll say, "We're going to be looking at bullying and asking your child about whether or not it happens," or the types. And then it asks you, it tells you that it's a voluntary study, you don't have to answer any questions if it's a survey methodology. It tells you your child has the right to withdraw at any time without prejudice or penalties. That's what active consent means, that as a parent, you see a permission form before the data is collected. So it doesn't necessarily mean that you would see the measures beforehand. And the reason why, in the past, the school climate survey hasn't been shown is because, yes, we did use a third party to administer that sort of mandate by the ministry. And one of the rules of the third party was that we weren't allowed to share the survey items with anyone because it's their intellectual property. Now, moving forward, if we decide to make the surveys in-house, we could definitely share it with trustees at the time if that's the wish, that they wish to see it. But for parents, that's typically not a process or a procedure that's done. We don't share the measures beforehand because we don't want the measures out there because we want a true, we want true data from the actual person that's responding. We don't necessarily want people looking at the questions beforehand and thinking of their answer. We want at the moment, "What do you think about this question?" And the fear is that once the measures are out there, you can't really reliably or validly trust the data that you're actually collecting in the end.
Trustee Trites.
Thank you. Just a couple of points, if I may, through you, Mr. Chair. So you've talked about active and passive consent. So in the forms that you've talked about, the permission forms, and I understand that the permission forms are just to give permission, but they're actually an opt-out. Why do we pick that instead of understanding if people want to opt-in, they can jump through the hoops and call you and find out? Opting out is an issue. It could be an issue because it takes a lot more to opt-out than it does to opt-in. And I'd like a definition between passive and active consent, please.
So through you, Mr. Chair, again. So passive consent typically involves distributing a parent letter explaining the nature of the study and providing a method to retract permission. Whereas in active consent procedure, the letter explains the nature of the study, explains, provides a document to give permission. The major difference is that with the passive procedure, parents, we assume that parents have consented unless some action is taken. Whereas in the active procedure, it requires the parents to signify in writing that they're permission. It does, like I said before, active consent doesn't necessarily mean you get to see the measures beforehand, but it does mean that you get to give your permission in writing before the data collection actually takes place.
And how much would you say, if I may, Mr. Chair? Yeah, just roughly speaking, would you have an idea of how many of these go out that there is active consent versus passive consent, just roughly speaking?
So most of the internal, through you, Mr. Chair, through, most of the internal research that we conduct here at the board are things that are ministry mandated, so most of them are passive consent. And just to speak or to comment on your question before, active consent procedures actually have lower response rates than passive consent procedures. And that's mainly because you have to wait for all of the parents to get back to you before you can even start the process. And as a board, because we're interested in using this information for evidence-based decisions, for our planning, for like school improvement, for achievement, for well-being, it's beneficial that we have the most information that we can. And so with the passive consent procedure, we tend to get higher response rates. And that's not just here on the board, that's in general in the literature. So one current example I can tell you is that this past year's school climate survey, for the students at least, we had very high response rates in the student survey, if it being, you know, in the 90 percentile range. And that wouldn't have been the case if we were waiting for active consent procedures because parents either don't get the form because it doesn't make it home, or are parents that don't understand the form because they don't, if the form isn't English, and they just don't fill it out, or they just don't have time. Or sometimes the at-risk population that we are so interested in helping, like those parents aren't around to necessarily answer the form. So there's lots of reasons why you get lower response rates when you use an active consent procedure. And I'd also ask that you consider, all of the internal research projects that we do here on the board are mandated by the ministry. There are four initiatives that we deem, you know, up top priority. And so we have the best interest at heart when we administer these types of survey requests. This is in contrast to all of the external research applicants. Yes, they have to fit with our board strategic plan and our priorities and our missions, but those don't necessarily help us internally with respect to planning and improvement, improving certain things. And so that's why it's extra, if you can think of it that way.
I just wonder, just the concern, and I understand everything you say, but in using passive consent, where you get a better response, which makes sense. I just wonder at what level it doesn't vitiate consent at all? Just a thought.
Danko.
Mr. Chair, I find it, I think it's very problematic that there is no requirement for consent in certain situations in the policy. The Tri-Council Policy Statement is not something that requires consent. And as you know, administrative procedures can be changed at the, you know, at the discretion of the administration without any accountability to the board. So I don't feel I can support the policy as amended without some kind of requirement for consent within it.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. A couple of points. Do we state any of the risks and benefits in these consent documents, or as we're asking for implied consent? Because that's something that I think people should know about. If we're going to be fully informed, we should be understanding what the risks may be. And secondarily, when you mentioned that if we waited for consent, then the at-risk groups who we are hoping to address their concerns through these studies, aren't those groups then, by the same token, not opting in or being informed of the research that's taking place on their children? If they're not opting in, are they receiving the information that their children are taking the, are participating in the research in the first place? So I think it works both ways on that. Is there, are there awareness of the risks involved? And is there awareness of what opting in means for those at-risk groups?
So with respect to risks and benefits, if they're known, yes, all risks and benefits are usually mentioned in the information letter and/or the consent form. That's especially true of external research projects. With internal research projects, again, if they are known, yes, they're stated on the information letter. Most information letter samples come directly from the ministry, and oftentimes, we don't modify them that much before they're sent out. One thing to note with survey research, there is usually what we call minimal risk. So the Tri-Council Policy Statement usually has this ethics matrix, or this risk matrix that all research ethics boards consider. And so like I said, survey research, which is primarily the types of research studies that we do here, are all minimal risk. But if there are, is a risk, yes, it's noted in the information document. As for the, your other comment about, you know, do at-risk parents really see the, would they really get the information even if we use passive consent procedures? I mean, that's always a possibility that they don't get the form and they don't see it. However, we do post, like, notice of the fact that that sort of data collection is happening elsewhere. It's often posted on Twitter or our board website, so it's not just about the letter. And oftentimes, teachers are often talking about it as much as they can anyway. So they have multiple opportunities to get the information and to know that it's out there in the system and that their child is going to be participating and they have the ability to talk to any of the principals or teachers and say they don't want that, their data to be collected.
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. I wanted to just ask about the question. So this climate survey, that's an internal survey, is it, or is it external?
Currently, this year, the student survey was internal.
Internal.
Oh, sorry. The student survey was external, but the parent and the staff survey was internal. Moving forward, as the new director comes in, and he or she can decide how best to move forward with the next administration, which will be in two years' time.
Okay. And so you're saying that parents cannot see the questions beforehand, but can they see them after?
So through you, Mr. Chair. They wouldn't be able to see it after if we use a third party, and that's, I mean, the rule is still in place, that we can't share the survey measures.
But internally, if it's internal survey?
I don't see why not.
Okay. And, okay, and then, so, if it, could I move that we put some wording in, that you'd come back with some wording that puts in consent somehow into the policy to address all these issues we've been talking about? Either to make them clear in the policy?
So through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, the, I don't foresee adding another bullet point when, in my professional opinion, it's already included, informed consent is already included in the last two bullets. I could suggest maybe adding to the second-to-last bullet point, "The Board expects that all educational research proposals adhere to the Tri-Council Policy Statement, ethical conduct for research involving humans, comma, including, including, or including informed consent." Yeah, or something to that nature, just so that it's a little bit more explicit. My issue here is that if I reiterate it, it doesn't make sense to have the same bullet point twice, because people will read in, they'll say, "Okay, well, Tri-Council Policy means informed consent, it means respect for welfare, it means this." So people will be confused when they see it multiple times. So I'm just trying to make it as clear as possible to all. But I can definitely sort of comment and be a little bit more explicit with the informed consent part.
Trustee Trites and then trustee Danko, and I think there was one other individual, trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So the second-last bulletin that you're working on, would it be possible and advisable, within the Tri-Council Policy Statement, pull out what you just told us? That would cover, you could put it in brackets, but you could pull out and show it there? And maybe something else that says, "Should that change?" That the board will be informed about that as well? And fellow trustees, you can think about that as well? Because you know what it means, and everybody in your industry knows what it means, but it doesn't make clear to us nor parents what that means. And I don't think that would be, it would be additional iteration, I don't think it's duplication. Would that make some sort of sense?
So I, so that's through you, Mr. Chair, the final bullet point, the fact that it's listed there that all research activities shall be in accordance with the administrative procedure. Informed consent and how we collect it is explicitly stated in that document for, like, how it differs between internal and external. And it does talk in there that informed consent is needed and that we must collect it.
But I think those words need to be somewhere in the document in the two different, we need to see the word consent, and then how you, if you want to pull it from Tri-Policy, Tri-Council Policy, or pull it from the procedure. But I do think the word has to be in here and then definitions around it. So if you could, would that be suitable?
Yeah, I mean, that's easy enough to, like I said, comma, including informed consent, or something very general, but it's, at least it gets at the fact that informed consent is being considered or is explicitly stated.
Trustee Danko, trustee Quinn, and then Chair Abena.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think trustee Trites is on to something here, but I think it needs to be added as a, in the, under the principles section, that we will obtain, that we will obtain informed consent in specific situations where, you know, not the situations where the ministry might be doing things, where passive consent is allowed by the legislation of the Education Act, but for the external situations where external research is being done, that we should be requiring it in those situations. We should be sending something out to parents that explains this and describes what they're agreeing to. Because our first duty here is not to streamline our workflows for ourselves, is to respect our duty to parents, to explain to them what is going on. That's our first duty. And our second duty is to make our workflows easier in this case. So unless we have this type of language under principles, that we will obtain informed consent whenever possible or whenever required, something strong and specific and not vague, not general. Something that's going to respect parents who are, because first of all, they shouldn't be expecting that their children are guinea pigs for some purpose. They should understand what is being done and why they're doing it, and give them a chance to opt-in, not the opportunity to opt-out after the fact.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Mr. Chair, I apologize. I echo trustee Danko's sentiments. I think that parents should know what and why we're asking in every instance that deals with their children. And secondly, the ministry mandates that we conduct this research, but it doesn't mandate that we don't inform or ask parents for consent for their underage children to be part of our research. So I'd like to see stronger language in the policy, not just in procedure. And my preference individually would be that parents have to opt-in for us to research on their, on their children.
Chair Abena.
Thank you. Similar, I guess, with regard to the Tri-Council Policy Statement, I think that there needs to be a definition of what that is. It doesn't have to be lengthy, it doesn't have to be a whole book, it just even fill in the rest of the page, blank page here. But, you know, when I read it, I say to myself, "Okay, what does that policy statement mean? Ethical conduct for research involving humans." It makes it sound as though you're going to do something very sinister to your children. And I know that's not the case. But it doesn't sound, it doesn't sound reader-friendly. It's fine for the experts in that field, but if you're not expert in that field, now I'm going to have to go to the computer and find out what a Tri-Council Policy Statement is. So perhaps just a definition? Yeah, just tell us what it is.
So through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, that's definitely possible. The actual policy statement document is probably about 300 pages in length. And each definition for each section as a core principle is definitely lengthy. I could do my best to try to summarize it in a couple of sentences for the policy, but...
I'm just, I just wanted to clarify for you, that from our point of view, like, I understand how a policy is supposed to be written and redundancy and all that kind of thing. But, but our point of view, that the trustees are saying is that if someone is concerned about research, they're going to go on our website and they're going to read this page. They're not going to go any further in depth because they don't understand what it is or they don't have time. They just want to see what the policy is. So I think we just, in spite of bad policy writing, we need to state it clearly, I think is what we're asking, that, that, that permission will be sought from parents. Nice and clear, just however... Nice and clear, just however you want to work it, but it needs to be clearly stated in the operating policy. Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Chair. So I guess my only rebuttal or comment back to that is, so what would be the plan then for ministry-mandated educational research initiatives that don't use active consent? So now our policy is going to say, we always have to seek active consent from parents, but the ministry doesn't do that. For at least for EQA, the EQAO survey that comes along with the assessment, there, there is no act, there is no active consent form that's given out beforehand. So, pardon me? No. So I...
It's not research, EQAO's not a research.
So I spoke to the chief officer at that, at that board and he said that they don't currently have an active consent procedure process and they don't, he doesn't foresee them going that way. So they take it as if you don't fill out the survey, then you don't give us permission to do it. EDI is similar, that we give out an information letter before it goes out. And if parents object, then they let us know. The KPS is another example, the school climate survey is another example. So there are multiple examples where the active consent procedure or process is not used. And so my fear is that putting it in here, we would be violating it every time we did those types of assessments or, or survey initiatives in the board because we wouldn't follow active consent procedure. That's the only hiccup.
I have a couple, we have a little bit of a backlog, so just Superintendent, you had a comment and then we'll...
Through you, Mr. Chair. Aside from the active consent with the ministry, if you look on page 30 of the administrative procedure on numbers seven and eight in particular, if those bullets were put into the policy, it certainly would kind of meet the requirements of, in terms of the informed consent of those external agencies or research organizations who are coming forward with those type of research. So if that, that may be sufficient in terms of putting into policy, and it would be repeat in terms of what's an administrative procedure, but it certainly would be doable to, to be able to get that in there so that parents would understand about the consent part, informed consent. That doesn't touch the other part that you're talking about right now.
Chair Abena, then we had Trustee Danko and then Trustee Trice.
Yes. We know what EQAO does, we know what the Ministry of Education does. The Ministry of Education is very child-friendly, but what we don't know is what the ethical conduct for research does. So, you know, it's something that's different for us, but it's also something that's going to raise more concerns with parents because they're not used to seeing this coming over from the school board. It's just, it's just the wording.
Trustee Danko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, that tri-council best practices for ethical conduct for research involving human beings in the social sciences, I suppose, is a, is a best practices document. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming it's a best practices, how to conduct research properly, how to be ethical. And, and, and informed consent may or may not be a requirement of a, of a best practice, but regardless of the fact of whether it's in that document and that statement, that's not legislation. And that doesn't mean that we will adhere to asking for informed consent just because it's in that, in that statement. And I agree, I, I didn't say that we should have informed consent in every case because there's ministry exceptions, but the distinction should be made in the policy. It should be made in the policy that the ministry will, blah, 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 as we've been hearing tonight, that this wording should be in that policy, saying that there are, there are ministry aspects of surveys which are, you know, that can be done without consent, but for all of these other cases, we're, we want consent where we can ask for it. So where we, for all of the things that the ministry does not prescribe, where there's, where consent is not required, anything outside of that sphere, we should require informed consent. And that should be explained in the policy. And there should be something going home to parents to explain that as well. And I think also Superintendent Overhold's remarks about moving those, some of those requirements from, yeah, from the procedure into the policy are well-taken.
Trustee Trice and then Trustee Quinn.
No, Trustee Danko said it so much better than I could have. But we make that distinction where we can have our informed consent, we have it. Where we cannot, well, obviously we can't, but that's good.
Trustee Quinn.
Sorry. Just through you, Mr. Chair, I agree with Superintendent Overhold that we can definitely add number seven and number eight from the administrative procedure to the policy to make it clear to parents in clearer language. But just to be clear, as a research scientist who's been doing this for 16 years, the tri-council policy statement is of, is not a best practice document, it is the gold standard. You have to follow all of those core principles when conducting any type of research project. And for any other institution where there is an actual heavy-duty research ethics board, your project will not get permission to go forward if you don't follow those core principles. And so as the chief research officer of this board, I am sure that all of the research that we undertake follow these principles because at the end of the day, our reputation is on the line with other boards and with the government. My reputation as a scientist is on the line. And so I hope that you would know that when I write the documents and when I, when I updated these amendments, that I had our best interests in mind.
Trustee Quinn and then Chair.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that very much and I hope that this conversation isn't in any way detrimental to your, to your scientific credentials. But I, I'm speaking on behalf of the parents. And as a parent of four children, I fill out a permission form twice a week of four, four kids. And I think that if we want to ask our students who are underage questions in a survey, parents should, should have the, the say in that. And I'd, I'd like to have language in our policy that, then give them lots of notice and send the note home every day if you have to. But parents should, should be informed and give explicit consent when their students, when their children are participating in research.
Chair Abena.
Thank you. Along a similar vein, as Trustee Quinn, this is nothing to do with credentials or belief in people or anything else. This is us trying to speak from the position of the parent. When the parent sees this, what do they expect? What do they understand from that? I mean, I don't understand all of that because I'm not in that field and that's fine, I would have to look it up. And there may be parents of varying interests and abilities, needs, et cetera, et cetera, because they may not be in that field either. This is nothing against what is being done here or anyone's credentials. We're trying to make it as user-friendly to the reader as possible.
Trustee Dank.
Mr. Chair, can I move that we defer this policy to the next policy committee meeting?
Certainly, but maybe we can just clarify the instruction going forward and also just echo, you know, there's not meant to be discouraging to the, the, the good work you do, so I, I hope this conversation isn't. But let's get some, let's get a, kind of a clear plan for next meeting so we can bring changes to it next meeting and vote on it, preferably next meeting to put, to push this forward. And I, I heard a lot of, I heard consensus on bringing things from the procedure into the policy, maybe providing some more explanatory notes on the tri-council policy. And I also heard, and I think there was a consensus, that you would like that explicit consent included in, in the wording of the policy as well. So I don't know who I can leave that with, Tim, to, to bring back.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. If the research department feels that obtaining consent from parents for student participation in internal research would pose a problem, I'd like a little more explanation as to how that problem could be addressed perhaps potentially? And if it can't be, then more information on why it can't be.
Trustee Dank, does that work for you instead of the defer? Oh, we can still defer it, but with that, with that...
Yeah, I mean, it's going to come up again at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So that's fair enough.
Okay. Okay, Trustee Carabella. Great. All in favor of deferring it to the next meeting? Opposed? Okay, that passes. Okay. Well, thank you very much for, for that. We'll move on to 3.2. Superintendent Over, oh, all, it's an action item. So could I have a mover to put this on the table? Trustee Danko, affected by Trustee Trice, now discussion.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Policy 248, Violent Threat Risk Assessment. This is a policy that provides information on a process that is in place to deal with youth in our schools who at times exhibit violent or threatening behaviors, escalating at times that may impact the safety of themselves and others. Currently, we have our principals and vice principals, principals who are trained and are being trained in this process. There has been some minor changes in this policy that have been recommended, addition of definitions, rerouting of some of our principles, and changes to the requirements to correspond with our current practices as this was the original policy back in 2013. So this is our first look at it again since then.
Discussion.
When I looked at this, through you, Mr. Chair, when I looked at this, I was interested in knowing more about how this policy relates to the, the special ed department and the complaints that I've heard in the media recently about the violence that educational assistance and special ed, uh, teachers are facing in the classroom. And only anecdotally, I've heard this in the media, but what, what is the, this policy and how does it relate to that, that environment?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Not, not a correlation between the two, it's more specific in regards to individual cases. Could there be some students who may be identified? However, you have to take a look at some of those situations that are being discussed in the media, looking at mitigating circumstances as to why those behaviors are happening. In these situations, it's more related to violent behaviors that are certainly very detrimental to lives, the entire school population, escalating behaviors of the students that kind of have a baseline and we see them escalating more and more so. And where more individuals are brought into the conversation, could be police, could be individuals practicing doctors, sorry, CAS, there's a number of other individuals who have, get a better picture of the individual as to what's happening in their lives. So would I say it's related to some of those situations? It usually isn't. I'm not saying it never would be, but it usually is not.
Okay, any further comments on this? See none, I'll take the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, passes. Moving on to 3.3, school anniversary celebrations. Who would like to take this? The director or... Okay, thank you, Superintendent.
To you, Mr. Chair. Policy V08, school anniversary celebration. This policy provides directions as to significant anniversary dates that a school must recognize. We have made some suggested amendments. First one was the removal of 10 years as a mandatory celebration. We did change the wording to make it optional for each community to determine other dates other than the ones beyond that. Other boards that we looked at for the recognition of school anniversaries didn't have the 10 years. We felt as though that may be a little bit early in regards to celebrating, especially some of our, our newer schools, we're going to be, going to have those 10 years quite often. Now, saying that in 25 years, we'll be having the same thing. But we just felt as though that was a little bit earlier, however, we certainly are open to keeping it in there. Removal of the funds being distributed to schools for this purpose, we, we do know that some, the costs are usually covered by schools themselves who are looking at it. There's ways in which if they are having concerns about accessing funds for that, they could, can go to their superintendent. So we didn't feel as though that, that was needed specifically in the policy. And then again, a clarification on how it's going to be communicated to each school about the anniversary and when it's happening for them.
I should get a mover for this, just on the, on the table, sorry about that. Trustee Intomasi, affected by Trustee Trice, discussion. Trustee Quinn.
I'm wondering if anyone around this table has a long enough memory to, to let me know why we have a policy that mandates celebrations. Sounds overly bureaucratic and...
It kind of takes the celebration out of the celebration when you're mandated to do so. Does anybody, give me some background on that?
I think if we give the school the money... Say Margarita's celebrating their 25th anniversary tomorrow, the bishop's coming to the, to the mass. And, and it seems like, I was under the impression that they were doing it because it was a great thing to do, not that it was mandated by the board to celebrate the 25th anniversary. So I'm wondering if this is a policy that would be better to be rescinded rather than, than developed, further developed.
Trustee Dank.
Are there any upcoming 100th anniversary celebrations?
One less policy.
That's, sorry, that's why I had asked if there's any institutional memory as to how it came about. Was there the fact that if it was left up to the discretion of the parent councils or the principals and the changing in staff and when, once you're gone for your six or seven years in a school, then, then the memory gets lost, so it's better to have a, a policy in place?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I know at this current time, we have an individual at the board office who will remind schools to say, guess what's coming up the year before, just so, because as a principal, you're coming in, unless you look at the cornerstone and say what year you were, you're not thinking of the anniversary date. Is it nice to celebrate our existence as we would wedding anniversary, other types of things? So I think it's important that we, we do it, whether or not it's in policy. If it's not in policy, I don't know. That's, that's the worry of it kind of falling by the wayside.
Right. I was thinking one might have gotten lost one year and said, we need a policy so that we have this in place if we missed, missed, if you missed your anniversary. There better be a policy in place there next year.
Trustee Trice and then Trustee Intomasi.
I understand about the funding and it's nominal what we give them, so to pull it because it may get the ball rolling, but there's additional that really needs to happen. But I wonder, it's kind of like the fundraising and maybe it should be an addition to the policy that it's not what in, what's in the policy, it's, you'd want to keep them under control, you don't want a big cause celebrate. And it would be because we are homeschool and parish. It's community and it takes in all the community. So I think it's a good idea, but I was just wondering, it's not what in here, like I said, that, does everybody have a sense that this is appropriate and enough, that isn't? I think they're always done very nicely, there's no doubt about it, and we keep things simple. I'm for it. There you go.
Just to follow up what Trustee Trice is saying, I think if you make so many things optional, then people are just kind of go, well, you know, we're busy with this this year and they forget it. And, you know, we're busy with that next year and they forget it. I think if you have, I mean, okay, 10 is probably a little, a little low, but I think when you get to the 25th, the 50th, most school communities, I think, rise to the occasion and that really is, it is community. You know, I've been involved in one at Holy Rosary, I mean, a couple of years ago now, and they hit their 50th. And it's really exciting for the whole community because pictures come out, everything comes out. So as much as we can say, well, you don't need to have it mandatory, no, you don't need to make it mandatory. But I think when you start taking the mandatories away, things just start falling by the wayside. And then the tradition is lost and I think especially as a Catholic community, we need to have things in place where the community, around the community are going, oh, there they are and they're celebrating and they've got a reason to celebrate and it, it really does flow right back into our Catholic history. I mean, we've been around a long time and we want to make sure that everybody knows we're still here.
Well, Mr. Chair, we, at this point in time, we, we...
flow right back into our Catholic history. I mean, we've been around a long time and we want to make sure that everybody knows we're still here.
Well, Mr. Chair, we, at this point in time, we, we could forecast which schools will have fiftieth and, or whether they will survive fifty years. We don't have a lot of experience with schools being over fifty years old, except, other than a handful, in South Oakville and South Burlington, and in fact, in one case where fiftieth anniversary was celebrated, that school is closing. So, I mean, I mean, a seventy-fifth anniversary would be very rare, a fiftieth anniversary would be odd, a twenty-fifth anniversary may well happen from some, some, to some frequency, and a tenth anniversary will certainly happen almost all the time. So, was this policy, a policy because of the budgetary aspect and the liturgical aspect? Is that why the policy existed? I mean, I don't see it coming into, being used very often, that's my point.
I think the principal reason for it is, as Tim said, a school is driven by, by the principal and principals come and principals go, and the chances are a principal on an anniversary date is not, hasn't been part of the community very long, doesn't know it's coming up, that kind of thing. And it, by having a policy, he or she has to, to do something and allow the staff to, to express their pride. So, I think that, that's a good reason to have it.
Further to trustee Danko's point about the ten years, that's a very good point. I would also say that limited time span might capture those past and those present and those in. That's a nice time span for families. And honestly, it gives every school two chances, ten or twenty-five, or if they want to do, because you're right, you're not going to see a lot of fifties, certainly not seventy-five or a hundred, so maybe that should be a consideration. Yeah. Two shin digs in a lifetime, ten and twenty-five, go for it.
If we take out the tenth anniversary, there's nothing preventing a school from having a tenth anniversary celebration, it's just not in the policy.
It says at the end.
Yeah. So, I'm happy to accept the recommended changes and vote on it.
On to discussion items. Four point one is the performance appraisal of director of education and I'm not sure if trustee Danko or the director would like to start.
To you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if trustee Danko had additional wording, but I was looking at some of the responses that we received at the last meeting and, under number seven, we did, I'm sorry, I'm going to go to the appendix, we did a lot of changes on there and I'm not going to address that, I'm going to address the policy. Under number seven, on page two of two, it says the director shall file an annual report, and then I was going to add, identifying progress toward strategic priorities and goals outlined in the multi-year strategic plan and areas of focus for attention for the upcoming school year at the September board meeting. So, I think that captured what trustee Danko was trying to say in a sentence and if, I'm happy to chat further about that.
Comments and questions on that? Thanks for reviewing this, especially with your experience over the last few years, it's good to have that happen every time we... Yes, please.
To you, Mr. Chair. When I, when I think about the performance appraisal of the director, I would think that the board would want to not only provide with the, with the appendix part with those areas, that you're providing personal responses or reflections, but also on the leadership style, but you're also providing feedback and, and an understanding of the strategic plan and how far and what has been done. So, it's like a two-pronged approach in terms of a performance appraisal for the director with those, with that appendices, with that appendix and those areas. That's kind of the personnel or personal side of the director and how they conduct themselves. And then you also want to see the performance measured against strategic goals. So, that's, that's why I decided to include that in number seven.
Trustee Danko.
Chair, all right. Where does the, is appendix A linked, okay, it's linked to the policy on page two? Right, I think, that's what I mean, like, I think that appendix A should be described more in number four, the, I mean, what it is, I mean, title of the document, that this document is part of the policy and that, yeah, and that, because it kind of looks like it's a separate document. I mean, it is a separate document, but...
Do you want me to reference it somewhere in the policy?
Yeah, reference it somewhere in the policy that the, that that template is something that trustees agree on and that they approve what's in the template, what's in, what's in... Yeah, yeah, the appendix A. So, appendix A ought to be approved by the trustees. Yeah, 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 as, as part of the policy and I'm not sure if there ought to be some kind of cycle, but I'm open to ideas there.
Just on that note, and so you said there is a cycle, how, not annually? It is annually, okay. And that actually links to the next, the next, we talked about the exec comp, comp policy last time, and you did mention that there already is an, we already have an existing review process and that that would solidify the director aspect of that, not superintendent's of the director portion, so. So, basically, all we're doing with this is basically trying to connect it better, make the changes that Paula has made and then connect it within the policy itself.
I agree with those changes, yeah.
No other comments? Do we want to bring this back for action with those changes to the next meeting? Okay. Yes, trustee.
Just so, I know in, in the perform, or in the executive comps, your timelines are by the end of June. This particular one is the trustees give feedback to the director by the end of June and then the director sets the, what, what they heard from the performance appraisal and what the data coming in from the review from the multi-year strategic plan for September. So, you, are you, are you going to appraise the director on appendix A in June and then what are you doing in September when all the data is collected over the summer and the multi-year...
So, what is the timing now? So, the annual reports usually published in September, is that it? For the previous year?
All of the, all of the data that we undertook and, and reviewed for all our goals and priorities for this year ends in June, we collect the data, we present to trustees our movement for next year against the strategic plan, whereas the, this performance appraisal with all the little, the rating you're giving to the director by the end, by June, you know, it's, it's two different things, so.
So, what is the best, what is the best timing for the director then to, to be appraised? Is it different than what it is or it's...
I'm just saying, there's two, there's two separate things along the lines here.
Right.
The only problem I see with that, and again, connecting it to the other discussion we'll have that we discussed last time is, to an extent, if the board decides to pass some sort of executive compensation policy, you may want to have that data in, in June, which would be hard.
Usually, by the end of the school year, any performance appraisal for an employee happens. Like, we have to finish at the end of June, so superintendents would have a performance appraisal done by the end of June, director obviously, this, because this is the director's performance appraisal and you're measuring also against the strategic goals, that moves into September.
Can we not just, can we not play with the timelines? Like, certainly we can, like, just move, like, I know the end of the year is a busier time, the summer when, you know, maybe it's a little bit, yeah. Trustee Danko.
Mr. Chair, does the, the act doesn't require the director to produce, doesn't actually require the director to produce an annual report any longer, does it? I mean, we're, our board is doing, our director is doing an annual report just because she's still doing it, right? I mean, maybe our policies require, but the act doesn't actually require an annual report any longer, is that natural?
Now, yes, you do have to do an annual report, but it's got, now they're adding various components, so now there's requirements inside it like well-being and equity and so those things you'll, those are the things they mandate in an annual report. But what you're looking for when you appraise the director is how far the director has led the system into, towards the goals that you're looking for.
Okay, so we're all comfortable with that coming back as an action item at the next meeting with, with, in June? Great. We're going to move on to four point two, executive compensation. So, this is back as a discussion item because at the last meeting, there were some comments made on how you'd like to see it, so I listened to our discussion a couple of times to try to incorporate the changes. I'll give a quick overview of what I changed and then maybe go into some details and people can ask questions. And thank you to trustee Intomasi also for sending some points to, to include or discuss. So, the, the main takeaway from last month's discussion was, there's no consensus on if, on putting the specific percentage changes into the policy itself or like the specific ratio of base pay versus merit pay within the, the policy itself. Frankly, there's, there's differing views on that and there's also differing views on if we just implement a salary grid with the two point six envelope that we have today. So, so that said, I think the meat of the policy being oversight of trustees on contracts, on what the compensation is for both the director and superintendents is good and there's a transparency component for, for it as well at the end of the policy. But basically, what I heard from trustees was, you want the ability to implement for the next three-year period to have a base pay option, which could be a hundred percent of the two point six percent, or, or you, you would like to decide what that ratio actually is. So, I'm not going to put into the policy because clearly there's a significant amount of concern about that being written in, but that said, I think what this, what this policy does is it, it forces the board on an annual basis to look at what that compensation is in June. And so, for, for this board in, in June, we can decide if we want to implement a automatic three-year increment changes, we could decide to implement a hundred percent merit-based pay, we could also decide to do something in between. But at least this policy outlines a point of time during, you know, frankly, during the end of the year when we're gathering this information on, on reviews of senior staff where we can then decide going forward what we're going to do. So, I, I hope that addresses the concern, the concerns because it basically puts the power back to you to say, there are concerns about this current situation we're in, we're going to make a decision as a board either as a automatic grid, as a ratio of some sort, or as a hundred percent merit-based pay, but that can be decided by the board at any, frankly, any point, it can be decided at any, at any board meeting. But this is a forward-looking policy where the board is going to just review this, this compensation, review contracts as they're signed on an ongoing basis, increasing the transparency on this, this one issue. So, I hope that addressed the concerns brought up, I'm not sure what else could be done about it. And I also want to point out trustee Intomasi, your, your comments, if that's all right. Let me just bring it up. You have asked for two changes, so I think you're just trying to make it a little less concrete. Under approvals of compensation, second bullet, approved by, add, and not unreasonably withheld. And under two, under approvals of contracts, add a fourth bullet, all contracts shall be expeditiously executed and not unreasonably withheld or delayed by the board of trustees. I think you just underlined a...
Would you like me to speak to those?
Of course, of course.
The only reason, when I looked at it, I thought it's, it's pretty open-ended and really just kind of leaves it loosey-goosey and I think, you know, any staff that are going to be working, they're going, I mean, depending on the makeup of the trustees, it can either just, as you said, you know, you just want maybe a cursory look at it and go, yeah, okay, but depending on the makeup and what could be happening and maybe somebody, you know, wasn't so happy with one of the employees or whatever, whatever, you want something that protects them as well and that they feel protected. So, I mean, and by protecting them, you're protecting the board because then that way you're not have, having something that gets dragged out unnecessarily for some whatever reason, and I've seen this happen in private sector, and then you're putting the board in, in a state of, where they could be attacked, you know, I mean, because if, if you've got somebody's contract and you're dragging your heels for whatever reason and you don't approve this thing, now it's opening the door to some litigation.
Mr. Chair, aren't we getting a legal opinion on the, on the policy to cover off that contingency?
So, yeah, I think you're speaking of that specific change that's been made, but I did put in my email, I think, just next steps for us, if you're okay with this, and I'm happy to make more changes, but I tried, well, I did incorporate everybody's thoughts from the last meeting. So, my suggestion would be we put this out to one of, one of our lawyers to give us feedback on the ability of our board to influence, to, to implement this. And, and I think the, I think the director should inform the board or before she chooses a legal firm so that we can, we can approve that. And, and then I think it should come back to the board for action and in the meantime, we can make changes if there are suggested changes that could just cover us from a legal perspective, but then it would come back for action to the policy committee at the next meeting and then go out to the board meeting and then stakeholder review to get this moving for the fall so that we can have something in place. And, and, you know, my thought is the board can still decide on the current issue of the two point six and the distribution of that in the meantime in June, you know, preferably under the, the suggestions of this policy, but obviously it can be different until this is fully, fully implemented. Trustee Rowe?
Just clarification, a couple of things. The executive pay envelope, is that included in the GSN announcements? So, we will, we would definitely know by the end of June? Well, for the next two years, right? Yeah, okay, that's fine. And the other question was, act, or business and human resources superintendents, are there, are there standards in the, in the strategic plan that can be used to set goals for them?
Trustee Danko.
Mr. Chair, just one minor point in the last line of the policy, it refers to trustees will be given a report on the sunshine report before it is submitted to the province. Now, just, I mean, the sunshine report is, is a colloquial reference to the public... to the Public Sector Salary Disclosure Act. So I think we should use that term instead.
The Treasurer, please. Okay, we'll make that change as well, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just with regards to that point, the timing is a little off as well just because it does look at the calendar year as opposed to our fiscal or school year. If we, if the trustees would consider the verbiage to be that we'll provide a report, but not necessarily before it is submitted, just because there's a vetting process in place. We submit everyone and there's errors in the system, it comes back. It's a back and forth and the timing is very tight. So I'm just a little concerned in submitting something. We can give the list for just the executive summary, the executive superintendent, but the entire report before submission might be a little bit of a time constraint.
Fair enough. And the point, so like I'm okay as long as everyone else is okay with that. The point of this was, we just don't want surprises. So before it's published by, which is months after you guys submitted, before it's published, we'd like to see it as a board so there aren't surprises. Because in lots of organizations, I won't mention which ones, there have been surprises as to, as to what has shown up on that. So that, with that, if we make that change, would that suffice?
Yes, absolutely. My concern was before submission because of the vetting process and the small timeline with the submission itself.
Through you, Mr. Chair. My only question, concern that may have is in terms of your timelines is the policy, next policy meeting is June 12th. In order to go out for stakeholder feedback prior to the end of the school year to get it into the fall, might be tight timelines.
So my thought, so you're saying it's a tight timeline between June and September?
Our stakeholders will probably only be available in terms of the, till the end of June.
Thanks for my time reading. No, but, no, realistically, realistically, we can, yeah, the, they'll have a couple of weeks in June. And if we want to, look, this, I think, makes sense that we started this. We should, whatever, whatever you guys decide as the amendments to this, which you're more than entitled to, we should finish this work within the timeline of the fall. So that would be my only suggestion. And I think then we can, we'll put this to action next meeting if we get the feedback from the lawyers. And then we'll have, we put out a timeline as to what we think and we'll get input from all trustees to make sure that they're fine with that timeline.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just in regard to the legal advice we seek, I'm hoping that we will go beyond the typical voices that we go to because we are looking to have something that is more reflective of the public service more broadly as well as what is expected in the private sector. So if we just go to the same firm that writes the contract for all the superintendents or now, that might not get what the spirit of this policy is to have some feedback on how we can implement this, not how we can't implement this.
Mr. Chair, there are a number of firms who are heavily involved in executive compensation, whether it be for education sector or colleges, universities, hospitals. And Joe would have that information. So we'll find a firm that is adept at that. My, I think what Tim was trying to get at is if we don't finalize this now, they, the superintendents don't know what they're going to be making before the end of the year and into next year. And they still don't know because of the current year, although you've seen it via email, has not been completed in terms of where they sit on the salary grid. So that's a problem when we've finalized it on February 28th and the grid or the combo that you're looking for hasn't been finalized and this policy is linked to that. So that's my concern.
So I did address that, which is to say that the Board, obviously, we're not going to have, this wouldn't be in place until probably October, right? With the various readings of how we want to do it and make sure everyone's happy with the policy at the end of the day, which is why I mentioned that in June, we could decide, look, we're in the right direction with this and therefore we should include that process in our June discussion at the Board meeting to put that, to solidify that. But I think, you know, look, I think to your point about how long this is dragged on, I think that there are a lot of, there were a lot of constraints and concerns about information that has led us to this, that has led us to this point. And this is, it is a good thing that this Board will have a policy because it will ensure that the situation, the scenarios we got ourselves in the past year are not duplicated again. Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Mr. Chair, then, to the Director. So if, if the superintendents now are still not, not knowing how that 2.6% will be allocated, could you come to us at the same time with following this template as to what your recommendations are? And then we could, not by policy, but by decision, be informed of your decision. Because right now, this policy is in place. But following the spirit of this policy, which we hope to implement in June, that you could get that process started and we could do it as a trial run perhaps, without policy in place, but following these guidelines.
Everyone fine with that process? Okay, yeah. So, and then just as to your other point on the lawyer, can you please send us a list of lawyers you were looking at so that the Policy Committee can just confirm that that's fine? You can put out a please? Okay. Will we just be informed, just, you know, beforehand?
Which firm were, were, as you mentioned by your...
Yeah, and trustees can ask questions about that or bring up any concerns they may have. Trustee Danko?
Not, no, Mr. Chair, I may as not remain to this, have we ever, has the Board ever considered having its own in-house lawyer on staff?
And I think Joe wanted to respond as well. We have, it would be very expensive to have an in-house legal firm because it's not just one lawyer that you may need. There's a lot of aspects of legislature that are very specific. So we use experts in very specific fields and we use them on retainer as we need them. It has been the practice and it has been more fiscally responsible for us. We're not as big of a Board as maybe the Toronto Board who can retain a whole legal team.
Thank you. Any further, sorry, sorry, Superintendent?
Thank you, through the Chair. Certainly, there are some larger Boards that have their own legal counsel or a team. In general terms, a lot of the experiments have not worked out well because, again, there's just so many different areas of law, similar to medicine. I'll give you an analogy. You're not going to go and get a heart surgeon to do brain surgery on you. And so, you know, law is very specific. If you've got an issue, which is an employment law issue, that is different from something that's a labor law, which is different from planning. And so when you try to go and get someone who's for everything, it doesn't work. And what you end up doing is having generally another higher-priced leadership position to which that individual is then having to farm out the work. So you're, in some respects, you're paying twice.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I mean, I'm thanks for getting an answer for me to that, to that question. But I mean, it's also, it could be a model whereby we have, I mean, maybe 60% of our legal fees are in one issue or one area of expertise and there could be some kind of hybrid model where one person in-house could handle a large portion of our work. I mean, it's just, it's a thought.
Okay, so we're going with four point two. So we'll get that opinion and any proposed changes beforehand, just so it can go as action. So, and it will still go as, yeah, it will still go as action. If we still need to make changes at the next meeting, that's fine too. But just to move this forward. Information items, five point one is just the admin procedure that we talked about. Five point two, Superintendent, I don't know if you want to comment on any upcoming agenda items, just for your information. And the overall work plan is there, as well as a correspondence, and that is, that is it. So could I please have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Quinn seconded by Trustee Carabella. Okay, all in favor? Great, pose, yeah. Could we have a closing prayer by Trustee Michael? Thank you.
While we're praying tonight, could we remember a parent in my school and parish community, Tanya Tucker, who passed away of cancer last week? Mother of four in our school, in our school boards.
If you could join me in a sign of our faith, please? In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We thank God for the way he has been with us during this meeting and ask him to continue to inspire and protect us as we leave. If you will join me in Hail Mary, please? Women, and bless us the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for sinners now and at the hour of our death. Amen.